Going to reconvene the Monday, June 11th, 2012 Board Agenda. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mission Statement. Would Member Curran or Member Hanson like to read the mission statement?
Our mission is to ensure that all students are prepared for college and a successful life academically, socially, and emotionally, as well as equipped with the necessary tools to have options and make decisions about their long-term goals. This will be accomplished by believing and working towards all students learning through rigorous curricula and meaningful effective instruction, consequently demonstrating mastery on high-quality assessments with all stakeholders being held accountable throughout the process.
Thank you. We have several absences today. President Quigley has had a death in his family and is not available today, so our thoughts and prayers are with him. I'm going to ask for a motion to appoint Secretary Pro Tem for today's meeting.
So moved.
Second.
I nominate Liz Campbell.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes. Agenda approval.
Mr. Vice President, I'd like to ask the Board to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Voice vote, please.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes. Treasurers' Report.
Yes, thank you. Treasurers' Action Report 5.1 is our Treasurers' Monthly Report for May 2012, including the financial reports, balance sheets, summary of revenue and expenditures, as well as the interim obligation payments totaling $3,146,549.51. In addition, this month, we have our debt service payment totaling $2,728,312.50, bringing the total interim obligation payments for May 2012 to $5,874,862.01 and 1 cent for your approval in action.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
Treasurers' Action Report 5.2 is our Schedule of Bills for June 2012 totaling $2,232,371.58 for your consideration in action.
Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
Treasurers' Information Report 5.3 through 5.6 are presented as usual for your information. Happy to answer any questions you may have regarding those reports.
So moved. Thank you. Consent Agenda Items?
Mr. Vice President, I'd like to ask the Board to approve Consent Agenda Items 6.1 through 6.13, 6.1 Board Meeting Minutes, May 29th, 6.2 Executive Session Meeting Minutes, 6.3 Trips for Bolingbrook High School and Romeo Ville High School, 6.4 Gifts for BJ Ward and JR Tibbet Elementary School and Bolingbrook High School, 6.5 Resolution 1316, Prevailing Wage Ordinants, 6.6 Resolution 1317, Transfer Funds with Working Cash to Education Fund, 6.7 Resolution 1318, Transfer Funds from Education to Debt Service Fund, 6.8 Resolution 1319, Transfer Funds from Debt Service to Education Fund, 6.9 Treasurers' Bond Renewals, 6.10 Before and After School Program, Contracts with PTOs and PTAs, 6.11 Before and After School Programs with Village of Romeo Ville Recreation Department, 6.12 Before and After School Programs with Lockport Township Park District, and 6.13 Student Activity Contracts for AVM.
Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Member Campbell, Secretary Pro Tem Campbell, and Member Curran. Roll call vote, please.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes. Student Staff Recognition, Pillars of Valley View.
First, we'd like to invite up Dr. David Hale, presenting for Educational Services.
Good evening, Members of the Board, Senior Administration, and the Community of Valley View School District. The Student Services Department would like to honor a clerical staff who goes well beyond what is expected, to serve the well over 2,000 students with special needs. This individual has contributed greatly to the department in terms of enhancing the way we complete our report writing to the state, and is always willing to pitch in whenever we need in this department. So I would like to congratulate, as a pillar of Valley View School District, Patty Alvarez. Thank you very much.
Thank you and congratulations. Middle School Track State Qualifiers.
First up to the podium is Principal from Jane Addams, Chris Shafly.
Good evening, Members of the Board, Community Members.
I will interrupt you one quick. I'll pretend to be President Quigley. You guys slide in so you can be on TV. Keep sliding. Slide behind your principal. Slide behind him. Thank you.
Before I introduce Coach Thass here, I would like to take a moment to recognize our other coaches who could not be here tonight. Mr. Thass is also joined by Ms. Sherri Jackson, Ms. Leslie Potite, and Mr. Mark Sessel that make up the coaching crew for Jane Addams Track and Field Team. And now to introduce the state qualifiers, Mr. Thass.
It's always a good thing as a track coach when you have not only fast kids, but they're good kids who keep their grades up, and this year was great. These kids are all really, really amazing athletes and amazing individuals. I'll just tell you each one who they are. First one, this girl over here, anybody who thinks they're fast, this girl right here, she's about 70 pounds, she runs a 5.38 in the mile, and she's only in 7th grade, won the sectional, and went down to the state to meet Ariana O'Neal. It's really great when I beg and I plead, and I beg and I plead, and then they end up coming out for the team, and they end up qualifying for state. State qualifier in the 4x200-meter relay, Jocelyn Clark. She can sprint, she can do distance, she can do everything. She was a state qualifier in the 4x200-meter relay and the 4x400-meter relay, Yuli Isagary. Gianna Esposito, three-time state qualifier, and just a side note, she didn't make it down state, but she is our school record holder right now for the long jump, Gianna Esposito. Caleb Robertson, the definition of hard work. Last year, I don't think he ran a 6.15 in the mile, this year he ran a 5.08. 5.08 is a 7th grader. Great job, Caleb. Chris Holloway, not only one of the fastest runners I've had, but one of the best students I've had. There you go. One of the fastest 6th graders you'll ever meet, Clayton Harris. And a great student, a great runner, and a great artist, qualifier in the 4x200-meter relay, Justin Rivers.
Go ahead, Brooks. You can get set up, Brooks. Come on, kids. Slide behind so you can get on TV.
Next, from Brooks Middle School, the Assistant Principal, Jason Paskevich.
Valley View Community, and specifically our Brooks Middle School family and friends, good evening. My name is Jason Paskevich, and I am here on behalf of our Principal, Dr. Wood. And with the blessing of senior leadership, the Board of Education, and Dr. Mitchum, I have the honor of recognizing five of the most dedicated teacher-coaches you will find in our fine district. And I'll be joining you in celebrating the accomplishments of 23 of the best and brightest student athletes our community has to offer. Coaches, Mr. Israelson had a final tonight, so he will not be here. Ms. Kerr, one of the most dedicated people you'll ever come across, had a family situation she had to deal with. Ms. Scott will not be here tonight. And then we have Mr. Burcock. And last but never least, Mr. Pietrucheski. We'll call him Mr. Pete to introduce the kids.
First of all, just to give you a little bit of overview of our sectional meet, there were 14 teams at the sectional meet. Our 7th grade girls took 6th overall as a team, our 8th grade girls took 4th overall, 7th grade boys took 3rd, and our 8th grade boys won the sectional meet. So BHS has some really, really talented kids coming up there. All of our 4x1 relays qualified for state. This is the first time that's ever happened, and the first time it's ever happened was that none of our members of the 4x1 relays has qualified for an individual speed event down state for the 100 or the 200. What that tells you is that we have a lot of kids who put a lot of work into their relay teams just to work on their exchanges, because they weren't the fastest kids at sectionals, yet they went down state because of all the hard work that they've done. Our top 10 state places, 7th grade girls, 4x1, took 7th place down state, 8th grade boys, 4x1, took 10th, 8th grade boys, 4x400, took 9th, 8th grade girls, 4x1, took 10th. They were 1.3 seconds away from first place, so that's how tight those races are down there. And Miles Sandine took 10th in the long jump. And now to introduce some of the members of our team that are here today with us, the future of Brooks Track, the 6th graders, Taylor Robinson for the 4x1. Sean Shawalter for the 4x1. Now our 7th graders, Donovan Kirk, 4x1. Paul Mandala, 4x1. Josh Simpson, 4x1 and long jump. Alma Lyles, 4x1. And now from our 8th graders, Breton Price, 4x1. Last, certainly not least, one of our captains, one of the hearts of our team, he qualified for the 4x1, the 4x4, and the Open 400, Francisco Rodriguez.
While they're taking their pictures, if the high school state track qualifiers want to get prepped, or do we have another middle school?
We have one more middle school.
Oh, we have one more middle school?
Next to the podium is Mr. Jacob Buck, the Assistant Principal from LuKansik Middle School.
All right, good evening, Members of the School Board, Senior Leadership, Dr. Mitchum, and Members of the Community. It is my pleasure to introduce to you, I'll introduce to you one of our track coaches to recognize our, we were fortunate enough to have one of our athletes qualify for competition down in Peoria a few weeks ago. He was coached by Coach Jason Pick, Gerald Holmes, and Heather Verba. Those three could not be here, but Coach Brian Simic is standing here to my left. So in qualifying for the state meet, it's a great accomplishment for any individual athlete. It's also a great accomplishment as a coach, and I can stand before you tonight and tell you that the work that this gentleman here to my left puts in is second to none, that he's there every day at 6:30 in the morning, working with our kids, he's there at 6:30 at night, working with our kids. So I know the pride that he feels in being able to take athletes down to state and really serve as a role model for the kids that we have at LuKansik. So I'd like to invite Coach Simic up to share a few words about our state qualifier and thank him for the work that he's done.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here tonight, and I appreciate the kind words that Mr. Buck actually gave to me. And all the coaches work very hard, and it's an attribute to this athlete that actually made it down state. This athlete's name is Peter Miskovich, and he placed 13th out of 40 kids in the 110-meter dash as a 7th grader with a time of 17.75. So we're looking for some big things from this athlete next year, and kind of excited about it, so we'll have more hopefully next year coming through. But we'll keep working, but thank you very much, and have a great night, everybody. Appreciate it.
High school?
Next, I'd like to introduce the Assistant Principal in Charge of Athletics and Activities, Mr. Alec Anderson from Bolingbrook High School.
Good evening. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce a couple of coaches, but first, I'd like to say a few words to Dr. Mitchum. This is my last week in the district, and I want to say thank you for your support over the last several years as a principal and superintendent, and the school board for all the support for our Bolingbrook Athletics, and anytime we had a need or a want, you always stepped up and got it through for us, so I wanted to say thank you for all your help and support. Okay, first, we have our boys track program. Coach Art Paul cannot be here.
Can we have all the kids slide forward and stand behind Mr. Anderson?
Come on, ladies. You can slide down a little further. I won't bite you. Our first kids that are going to be recognized aren't here this evening, but in our boys' track program, Coach Art Paul, who's a veteran coach, cannot be here this evening, but we had two boys who made it, Jordan Banks in the triple jump, and Xavier Perkins made the high jump. Those two kids made it down state and had a great run this past season. And our girl side, Coach Howard Birmingham, who's to my right, Coach did a great job with the young ladies this past spring. He was a first-year teacher in our district, first-year coach, and he really elevated our track program, was an outstanding teacher as well. And I'm going to turn the mic over to Howard, because he's going to give you the info on some of the girls who are here tonight and what they did this past season. It was a record-breaking season, so, Coach?
Thank you all for having me. We only have a few of our ladies here to represent the Bolingbrook Track and Field Team, but they represented as well. Ironically, these same three ladies came to our voluntary workouts that we had in late November, and it paid off. Kimberly Azee, who qualified for the Open 1, the Open 200, she took 4th place in the Open 1 with 11.8 seconds, that was a PR for her, and then she also earned 9th place in the Open 200-meter dash in the finals at state. Kayla. Kayla Bell, wow. Started off jumping 35 feet once I first got my hands on her, and I got to tell a story because her dad came to me and said, he said, "Coach, you got to have her jump a 38 in the triple jump." And her form is not the greatest, but she is a hard worker and she can jump, and I looked at her and I looked at him, I said, "You know what? 38 feet it is." And at state, she jumped 38 feet 1 inch, which also earned her 5th place in state, so heck of a job, Kayla. And then last but not least, one of our hardest-working girls, Kim Taylor, Kimriana Taylor. Girl could do it all, the Open 1, the Open 2, Open 4. Unfortunately, she pulled her hamstring in our conference meet, which we hosted at Bolingbrook High School, but she earned her keep, she earned, she earned her way to state in the Open 100-meter dash. Unfortunately, she could not participate in the Open 2 because of the hamstring, but she did help us win state in the 4x1 meter relay. So I was told to summarize our accomplishments in one year, that is not possible within a five-month period, that these girls, that the work that they put in. But to epitomize it all, these girls earned the right to, they won indoor and outdoor conference, okay? They won sectionals, and they also tied 8th in state, which I was told is the first time this has ever happened in school history, and they just really earned their keep, and they really worked hard, and it was a pleasure working with them. It was a pleasure working with Coach Dara, she helped me out tremendously. Coach Gargero, who cannot be here, Coach Stefos, and Coach Armstrong with the Pole Valters as well. But I really thank you all for giving me the opportunity to be not only a teacher here, but a coach, to be able to coach these young ladies. Thank you very much. Okay? So Kimberly Azee. Kimriana Taylor. And Kayla Bell. Thank you.
I'll add one more note about Kim Azee. She told me tonight she's got her choices down between University of Houston, University of Wisconsin for her track scholarship for next year, so she hasn't made her choice yet, but congratulations to Kim on that as well.
And Mr. Anderson, thank you for your service to the district, we appreciate it. And also to Dr. Hale, thank you for your service, he'll be moving on too.
Next, I'd like to introduce the Assistant Principal in Charge of Athletics and Activities from Romeo Ville High School, Mr. Jim Poderas.
Good evening, and we'd like to thank the Board and Superintendent Mitchum for recognizing six of our outstanding athletes at Romeo Ville High School tonight. Our boys' track program, every year, we have qualifiers and great athletes, and this year was no different. Our coach is Scott Harper, and our 6th place finisher in the 200-meter dash was Perez Ford. Both Perez and Scott are unable to be here tonight. Perez is a decathlete and is now training and participating in some national meets as a decathlete. So Perez Ford was our 6th place 200-meter at the state tournament. On the girl's side, our head track coach is Ted Ralstad, and he'll have the honor to present five outstanding young women who all participated in the state meet, and four of them placed. And Ted?
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to be recognized here tonight by you guys. We had five young women that qualified for the state meet, and they really were a core group to our team this past year. You know, they're a very passionate, energetic, hard-working group of ladies that, you know, were an outstanding group for me to coach, especially being a first-year head coach here at Romeo Ville on the girl's side. But our, the four girls up here qualified for the 4x1 and the 4x200 relay, and placed 6th in the state in the 4x200. In doing so, they also broke the school record, which has, I believe, been since 1984, when they ran a 142.3. So it's a great accomplishment and a testament to their hard work over the course of the season. The other young lady who unfortunately couldn't be here qualified both in the shot foot and the discus, and this was her first year competing for track and field, and she won several invites and set a lot of records over the course of the season. And, you know, the five girls were, you know, like I said before, a core group, and these five girls really carried the team over the course of the season. We were able to win two invites and were second place in two others. So once again, I can't be more gracious than to coach these fine young ladies. But the lady that couldn't be here tonight was Shannon Hensley. She qualified in the shot and the disc. And then our 4x1 and 4x200-meter qualifiers were Colleen Lilly. Angel Jones. Latasha Pfizer. Who will also be competing next year at Lincoln College in both volleyball and track and field. And Caitlin Hammack.
All right, we're going to move into the business portion of our meeting. For those of you who wish to enjoy the rest of your Monday night, now would be a good time to exit. If you wish to stay, you are by more than welcome to stay. Liaison reports, any reports from Board members? Okay. Audience participation, any stakeholders, individuals, or groups that want to present their views to the Board, please step to the podium now. All right, seen none. Oh wait, we have one, sorry.
Vice President Goojus, distinguished members of the Board, my name is Erica Ekstrom, and I'm here on behalf of the STEP campus tonight. Forrest Witchcraft once said, "A hundred years from now, it will not matter what kind of car I drove, what kind of house I lived in, or how much was in my bank account, but that the world may be a better place because I made a difference in the life of a child." I'm here because of the students, family, and staff of the STEP campus. Would like to thank the School Board for all their support and recognition this year as we opened and celebrated our first year at Valley View. Because of the support that you have given us, our students with disabilities had a higher rate of employment than the national average. We had an increase in connection to students with adult services, as well as 84% of our students increased in their vocational and life skills. So whether you bought a cup of coffee, came to visit, or just connected us to a business, I wanted to thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you again, Ms. Claire.
Good to see you all. I have a question. You don't have any awards for academics, just sports?
Not tonight. We've had academic awards, I think even our last two meetings.
Last two weeks. Oh, because I was getting really upset, it's only where you send them off to college was because they was in sports.
Not the case.
Not the case?
Not the case.
So yeah, and I have another question. What's your academic average? This year, no less, one meeting I was at, he was telling me about how the student were failing in math. What's been the improvement percentage in that area? Came up with a solution of, you did a study that cost millions of dollars, and you decided to give them algebra as a result of their failure. And I had algebra in 7th grade, and you decided to give it to them in high school, and that would be the answer. As a result of that, have the math scores improved?
Our scores have not yet come out yet, Ms. Claire.
They haven't not came out yet?
No, we're waiting for our scores to come out from the state.
From the state?
Yep.
So you haven't known anything how they're doing at all this year?
We have preliminary results for our ISAT, but we do not have final results yet. Those don't come out until a little later, this summer.
And another question, did I miss the part where you all, the Special Ed Department got their accommodation? Did I miss that meeting? They're never in, did I miss that?
They got accommodations tonight, as a matter of fact. They were the pillar of Valley View tonight. Somebody from the Special Ed Department was a pillar of Valley View.
I, no, 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 I'm talking about the students themselves, not the staff. Are they ever brought up front and recognized for their hard work and diligence?
Yes, they are. They are.
As a parent of a child, especially, why I am not notified when that assembly is out? is there?
Um, we do-
I get a notification of every other one.
Uh, we do have notification of every board meeting. The, the agenda is posted on our website for the public.
I'm not on your website.
But, but Ms. Claire, I will indicate that if you are making a request tonight to be notified specifically for something of interest-
Otherwise, every parent don't have the time to sit up and go on websites.
Then, then let me know those specific instances in which you would like to be, be present.
Everyone.
And I will, well, I-
Everyone.
I, I-
Every board meeting.
Ms. Claire, I, I can't give-
I'm a parent in the district, that's my right.
Well, then, I would suggest you be at every board meeting.
Notify me, I'm sending a schedule.
They too are on the website every date for every board meeting.
I'm a parent, I don't sit on the website. A parent.
Would you like me to send you the dates?
Thank you.
I will do that, Ms. Claire.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I'd also thank Dr. Hale.
Duly noted. Thank you.
Thank you. And welcome, Mr. Epps.
Duly noted as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other audience participation? Seen none. Action reports. Dr. Mitchum?
I'd like to ask that the board approve action item 10.1, Student Due Process Cases A through R, and 10.2, Second Reading and Approval of Revisions to Board Policy for Thirty Revenue and Investments.
Let's do 10.1 first. Can I have a motion for 10.1?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes. Uh, motion for 10.2, the second reading. Uh, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes. Action reports.
Yes, I am presenting tonight on behalf of Rachel Kinder and myself, uh, for the board's consideration, Student Parent Handbooks for Elementary, Middle and High Schools for the 2012-2013 school year. I'd also like to add that this item is to be passed, subject to attorney review, to ensure that it is legally up to date. Thank you.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Member Hanson, how, how is the handbook committee doing?
The handbook committee did a wonderful job. I was only able to make to one of the meetings, but they did. They thoroughly went through the books. Um, I saw kinda all the things that they were working on, and they did a great job.
Thanks for your service on the handbook committee. Roll call vote, please.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes. Action reports, Assistant Superintendent Grzafi.
Thank you. Uh, action report 12.1 is a recommendation to approve the annual renewal of instructional operational software maintenance programs for 2012-13 as presented. We've got, uh, it looks like 12 titles there totaling $553,125.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
12 dot 2 is a food service department large kitchen equipment bid award. We had four responses to, uh, our request for, uh, uh, equipment at 13 of our locations throughout the district. Uh, we are recommending the award be placed with Edward Don and Company of North Riverside as the low responsive bidder in the amount of $172,243.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Grzafi, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but food service, the funds within that have to stay within that fund?
That is correct. Uh, we've got a balance in that, in that, uh, in that sub-account, if you will, enterprise fund and the education fund, and so, uh, that's exactly correct. Those funds need to be spent, uh, within the, uh, the food service program.
That's a requirement of state or federal?
Uh, I believe it's federal.
Okay. I need a motion. Uh, I have a motion. I need a roll call vote, please.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
12.3 is a recommendation to approve the bid award for paving at the Administration Center, Woodview, and alternate one, Jamie McGee, front turnaround. Uh, the low bidder, uh, was flexible pavement of Romeoville, uh, in the amount, uh, exercising a deduct, credit deduct for reclaiming the existing asphalt as, at those locations. Uh, the low bid was, uh, $189,848. We are recommending that, uh, that bid be awarded.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
Action report 12.4 is a recommendation to award to the low bidder, uh, replacement music lockers at Bowling Brook High School to Winger Corporation in the amount of $20,036. Uh, this is phase two of what, uh, was to be a three-phase project, uh, in looking at both, uh, the remainder of lockers at Bowling Brook High, as well as the music lockers at Romeoville High, we feel that, uh, this should be the last of our needs in terms of music lockers. So, uh, happy to report that, uh, this should wrap us up for, uh, for many years moving forward. Uh, so we are recommending the amount, uh, be, or the bid be awarded to Winger as the low responsible bidder.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Aren't these lockers only eight years old at Bowling Brook High School? They are. Um, many of the, uh, instruments, uh, as I've been told, uh, they didn't fit in the lockers, and as the kids either tried to close the doors, uh, to secure the instruments, uh, the, the doors sprung, they became a jar. Uh, multiple repairs have been attempted, and they've just gotten to a point now where they cannot be repaired any longer. Uh, so- So they order in bigger lockers? They are ordering bigger, bigger lockers, that's correct. Uh, the nice thing about these lockers are, they are a better built locker, uh, they are through bolted on the door hinges, so we're hoping that they last much longer than the eight years we got, uh, the prior, uh, prior product.
Roll call vote?
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
Action report 12.5 is a recommendation to accept the Irene King Elementary School Playground renovation bid, uh, be awarded to Abbey Paving, uh, out of Aurora in the amount of $246,055. Uh, there is a sketch there in your packet, uh, showing the extensive, uh, changes, if you will, to the, uh, to the, uh, playground area. Uh, the primary difference here is that, uh, we'll have a, a much better vehicle circulation pattern for parents, uh, to drop off and pick up students. Uh, this has probably been a year in the making with the help of, uh, uh, the principal over there to make sure that they were, uh, in the end, receiving what it is they wanted in terms of both vehicle circulation, as mentioned, as well as, uh, a playground. Uh, the other component of this is a, uh, an intergovernmental, uh, participation with the Lockport Township Park District, who will be providing the playground, uh, at Irene King, uh, this summer. Uh, and so, uh, they're putting in, uh, almost a hun- over a hundred thousand dollars to, uh, upgrade the playground there, uh, again this summer. So, uh, it's nice when we can partner with, uh, fellow governmental agencies to, uh, enhance and improve our, uh, our school buildings. Uh, and so we are recommending that, uh, Abbey Paving be awarded the bid as, as recommended.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
Action report 12.6 is a recommendation for the Romeoville High School English Planning Room renovations. Uh, this is the second department office to receive upgrades, uh, doing a site visit there. The office, uh, really was a amalgam, if you will, of, uh, various styles of furniture, um, desks, file cabinets, what have you, uh, really not conducive to, uh, um, any type of professional environment in which, uh, uh, the English office, uh, really conducted its business. Uh, and so last year, we did the math office, uh, circling back around, we're doing the English office again this year, uh, and I am recommending, uh, Lowry McDonald, uh, be awarded the bid in, in the amount of $43,624 as the lowest responsive bidder.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
Action report 12.7 is the recommendation to accept the low bid, Frank Cooney Company, Wooddale, uh, $131,845 for the all-day kindergarten classroom furniture bid.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
12.8 is the recommendation, uh, for our workers' compensation insurance renewal. Uh, we are recommending a one-year renewal with Safety National as our specific only carrier. Uh, the premium for this year, uh, will be reduced by $22,000. Part of that reduction comes from the increase of our SAR or self-insure, self-insured retention, meaning that's the amount of, uh, money the district would be exposed to initially. Uh, anything above that threshold would be covered by the excess carrier. Uh, we are increasing the SAR to a $600,000 threshold, uh, from what's currently at 550. It says 500, I apologize. It should say 550, so it's a $50,000 increase. Uh, part of the reason is they are not offering us a $550,000 SAR any longer. Um, we are into their lair, if you will, uh, with three claims over the last three years, uh, and so, based on the amount of premiums that we've put in and the amount of money that they've paid out, uh, they are not whole. And so they are looking to, uh, say, "We want to take on less exposure," if you will, "or risk" by increasing the SAR that the district would, uh, would have. Um, we're willing to take that on, certainly with the $22,000, uh, premium savings, partially because the markets are very tight. There was only one other carrier, uh, that we were able to obtain a favorable bid from, uh, and that bid was higher than what Safety National, uh, was offering. So, um, you know, again, it's, uh, it's not ideal because we do have that additional risk, uh, but at the same time, the markets are such that, uh, we're kind of painted into a corner because we have had some, uh, some high claims, if you will. Uh, along with that, we are recommending that Gallagher Basset, uh, continue as our third-party administrator, uh, for a three-year period. Uh, they are offering a zero increase renewal, uh, for 2012-13, along with a 2% increase in administrative fees for the, uh, the following two years. Uh, and so, uh, again, we have had, uh, good, uh, good experience with their services, uh, in managing our, uh, workers' compensation claims. So again, the recommendation is that we, uh, we, uh, renew with, uh, Safety National for our specific excess stop-loss, uh, and Gallagher Basset with our third-party administrator.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? I've not made it to a workers' compensation meeting. Um, how, how do we stand, Ms. Hawkes, uh, Mr. Grzafi? How are, how are we doing on our claims and our reductions, and are we safer?
Uh, you know what? I don't have it in here. I thought I put it in here with the ver- various exhibits. Our claims are down tremendously. We've had a couple bad years. Uh, I think the worst year, we were, uh, as high as three and a half million dollars. Uh, we had a year after that, I think we was down to two. I think this last year, uh, we were just over $1 million in, in-
Excellent.
-compensation claims, so, uh, I do feel that the committee, uh, committee's work has had some, uh, some benefit, some value in terms of, uh, keeping a lid on our costs. Uh, as you know, it's, insurance is cyclical, but having a focus and, uh, making sure we, uh, we investigate every claim, not that we never did, but, uh-
Well, $2 million lower speaks to some success.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, excellent job. Thank you. Well, uh, I have a motion, I need a roll call vote?
So moved.
I, I just need a vote, I'm sorry.
My mistake.
Go ahead, Taylor.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
Uh, final action report this evening, 12 dot 9 is a recommendation for, uh, security camera video management software. Uh, this software, uh, really is the backbone of the security, uh, systems, camera systems at Bowling Brook High, Romeoville High, Tibbet Elementary and Transportation and Maintenance Center. Um, this software has been in place for about eight years. Uh, it's been vetted completely between our building and operations department, as well as the security detail at, at, uh, both high schools. Uh, and so I had asked them to put together, "What is it about this software that you feel, uh, is going to do for us migrating from the old to the new?" Uh, and so, here are the bullet points that I felt really, uh, supported the, uh, the recommendation. Uh, direct support agreement, which enables us to do our own repairs and upgrades. That's something that we didn't have the ability to do under the old system. Uh, the video servers are at the end of their life and need replacement, no matter what software, uh, we use. So again, we're, we're kind of being, uh, told it's time to, to upgrade. Um, this software uses much more, uh, much less bandwidth, thus taxing our school network, uh, infrastructure, uh, at a lesser, to a lesser extent. Um, one of the biggest things, particularly for the, uh, the security detail at the high schools, is that you can view recorded video and live video at the same time. Uh, very often, when they were, uh, reviewing video for investigation purposes or what have you, uh, they were unable to view live video, uh, as it was currently happening, and that, uh, they created a, a problem, a gap, if you will, in our ability to, uh, be effective. Um, we were able to use the, uh, pan tilt and zoom features for outside cameras remotely. So again, if there was, uh, a situation where we were maybe not on campus, but we were aware of a situation, uh, they'd be able to patch in and, uh, again, use the cameras, uh, remotely. Uh, they can be used on mobile devices. With the advent of, uh, smartphones and iPads, uh, tablets, if you will, uh, this software allows us to do that, uh, on those devices. Uh, it's much more user-friendly, um, and we can, uh, interface with our access control software, which, uh, can create alarms on the screen or to pull up camera views when doors are opened. Uh, as you can imagine, either high school has multiple doors and, and trying to, uh, understand when those doors are, uh, being left open, or people are exiting, or trying to get in, uh, again, that interface, I think, is, is, is a very nice, uh, very nice feature. Uh, the other thing is they, uh, the staff did some, uh, reference checks, uh, and, uh, very satisfied with, uh, one district in particular out in Texas, uh, has been using this system since 2,300 of its schools. So, uh, certainly, I, I can't imagine that a software package that, uh, is that robust, uh, would be tolerated if it wasn't, uh, it wasn't effective. So, um, uh, in talking with Mr. Brown, our Director of Security, uh, as well as the, uh, the two, uh, lead security folks at, at each respective high school, uh, they couldn't say enough about, uh, this upgrade. So, uh, we are making, uh, the recommendation to, uh, award the, uh, software package to Chubb from Burr Ridge, Illinois, on the amount of $77,500 as the low responsive bidder.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seen none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes. Action report, Executive Director, uh, Ms. Hawkes.
Thank you, Mr. Goojus. Uh, tonight, action report 13.1, we're seeking your approval on the consolidated action report for certified and classified personnel. Um, we're seeking approval on 221 items for certified personnel. One reason that number is so high is because of the recalls on the RIF. Um, just so you know, we are about three-fourths of the way through, um, with that for the certified and classified, um, we're about halfway through. With that for the certified and classified, we're about halfway through. And then we're also seeking approval on 68 items for classified personnel, two for classified administrative personnel, and one for certified administrative personnel.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote?
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
Action Report 13.2, we're seeking your approval this evening for Resolution Number 1320, authorizing dismissal of educational support personnel employees for reasons other than reduction in force.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Hanson?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Curran?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
Is that all, Ms. Hogs?
That's it.
Dr. Mitchell?
No report, no information.
Legal Services?
No report this evening, thank you.
AFT? Valley View Council? Valley View Office Personnel Council? Is there any old business? New business? Are there any questions from the public? Seen none. Oh, Ms. Claire?
How could I get a copy of the budget of the school board?
You sure can. I think by law, everything over $10,000 is- I'm sorry, we're getting some feedback. Not sure what's causing it. Sure, we'll be happy to get that to you. If you want to see one of us afterwards, we can get that to you. Any announcements by the board? By the administration?
I have additional announcements. Just want to make a special mention, on behalf of Rachel Kindred and myself, we have three new coordinators who are, who have been approved tonight. Paula Eck, who will be our pre-K through 5 coordinator of literacy and social studies effective July 1st. Jill Hollander, who will be our coordinator for grade 6 through 12, literacy and social studies effective, I'm sorry, effective August 20th, 2012. Let me correct that. And then Adam Herter, who will be our pre-K through 5 coordinator of math and science effective August 20th, 2012. We also wanted to welcome officially Erica Ekstrom, who will be our Director of Student Services. And we also have a new summer learning principal, who will be overseeing McGee, Amy Paris. Just wanted to make sure we had honorable mention of those individuals.
No problem. Summer learning experience starts?
Summer learning experience starts Monday, so Monday, June 18th. It goes all the way until August 10th. We're very excited. We're fully staffed at this point, so all systems go.
And if it's, if you think it's too late to sign up, I'm sure we'll be able to squeeze you in.
Contact me.
I'm sure we can squeeze you in. If, if parents out there, it's going to be a great program.
Yeah, contact me via letter.
I know my, I know my kids are looking forward to it, so I'm sure we can squeeze you in, though, if you, if you need to get your child in this great program.
Thank you.
I need a motion. I need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Hanson?[1763.83]